This is strictly captured. No, it's on court too, which they believe is more important. They've been talking about this for a long time. Life is better without. It's hard to take half of that number and give it to you. We're actually in the middle of seven or eight hours. We'll get every court up and down. But right now, it's actually the three spot by the road. Again, I'm not trying to be negative.
Calm down. But listen, listen to the voice it makes.
I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I rise. The United States of America, and with liberty and liberty for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Record will reflect that all of the members of the city council are present except Mrs. Shea. Are there any changes to the minutes of the last meeting? If not, we'll accept the minutes. We have one item for final consideration this evening from the Finance and License Committee. Mr. Sampson.
Committee recommends the council adopt fiscal year ninety-three ninety-seven CIP as a planning document with a fiscal year ninety-two capital budget to equal twenty-one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and ninety, twenty-one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand and fifty-eight dollars reserving the right of the council to revise all projects, especially the fire station bond issue before final budget adoption. Authorize staff to adjust budget figures to reflect actual budgets needed to finish projects that are currently under construction and have the staff incorporate the various projects into the fiscal year ninety-three budget to prepare for final council approval, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wood.
I'm going to amend this and move the leaf machine, which is Project SE dash two oh one from next year up to this year and take that money out of the contingency money, dropping that down from a hundred thousand down to what do you, be, uh, seven hundred and twenty thousand. I think a leaf machine will allow us to get more leaves off the street and more leaves from going into the dump, which will extend the length of the dump and will reduce the cost for the future generations for landfilling costs, and we could send them to eco-compost and they can reuse them in the, into compost, which is a good, good product.
I'm a little bit concerned, Will, about mixing the two budgets here, although in the end, I think that that may be fine. I think that a motion to reduce the contingency in the nineteen ninety-three budget, that's what you're talking about, is that correct? Uh, maybe premature at this point because the budget is not, that budget is not before the council. I, I think that expressing your intent about where the money would come from is certainly entirely in order, but I'm not sure that trying to, to change the fiscal year ninety-three budget is in order at this point. So I'd ask if you would consider amending your motion just to change the CIP and then consider the others to be an indication of your recommendation of where the money would come from. Mr. Sampson?
Uh, I believe that I would, uh, speak against that particular motion inasmuch as the way the motion is now before us. It says, uh, reserving the right of the council to revise all projects, uh, and I think that would allow us to still continue to do this without, uh, starting to, uh, revise the capital improvement program here on the floor. I think, uh, we should do that during the budgetary process rather than, uh, now on the, uh, the passage of the CIP program.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye. Oppose, no? While the chair is endowed, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
This is on Will's original amendment motion. Craig?
No.
Gingarelli?
No.
Harrison?
No.
Hermes?
No.
Horton?
Yes.
Loughlin?
No.
Potts?
No.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rosenleaf?
Yes.
Sampson?
No.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion fails, seven-four.
Any further amendments or discussion? Mr. Wood?
I'd like to delete the carousel from Missoula. Um, I don't think that spending money on this project is a priority for the city, and I feel that when we had that resolution in front about this project, it should have been in that resolution there that they were going to come back and ask for money.
Further discussion? Mr. Horton?
New microphone, so I'm not sure how this is going to work.
You have to press, press.
Thank you.
Keep it pressed.
New microphone, so I'm not quite sure how this is going to work. I personally think the carousel is probably the most positive thing that's happened to, uh, Missoula in my remembrance as far as something that, uh, will unify the community, and I think it is appropriate for the city to get involved in this. Uh, it may be a question of to what degree, but I believe it is appropriate for the city to be involved in it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, no? Motion fails. Any further discussion? If not, we will vote on the CIP as presented. Roll call, please.
Gingarelli?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Loughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rosenleaf?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Wood?
No.
Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes ten-one.
We'll go now to public comments from citizens. We offer an opportunity each week for citizens to address the council on items other than those that are set for public hearing. If your comments are for the public hearing, you should wait until then. Otherwise, we'd welcome your comments now. We ask you to limit it to three minutes and to state your name and address as you begin to speak.
Hi, my name's Lori Snyder. I live at Missoula Village West Mobile Home Court. I'd like to bring to your attention and inform you of the problems we've been having in the last four years in that mobile home court. We have had electrical problems, we've had water problems, just recently, we've gone through a bout of sewage problems. These are ongoing problems. We would like to ask for your help in any possible way, the Missoula City Count, City County Health Department, their cooperation, anything we possibly can to help us correct these problems in our mobile home court. They're not just in our courts, they're in everybody's courts. We'd like your help, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Joe Thomas. I live at Missoula Village West Trailer Court Number Twenty-three. A lot of times, figures don't mean too much unless it's brought forth in a, in a situation like we've had out here. In and around Missoula County, there's a hundred and sixty-nine trailer parks. Each one of these trailer parks house thirty to thirty-five trailer park houses on an average. There's an average of two-point-six-five persons in each family that lives in a trailer house or a unit. That accounts for fifteen thousand people in and around Missoula County that live in trailer homes, mobile home parks, and I'm sure some of your relatives live in trailer parks or friends. The problem exists. The only way they can get help is the way we did, through Montana People's Action, and we ask that you people help us out. I've lived for two and a half months with two to three inches of raw sewage under my trailer. My kids have been sick. I've got two kids under nineteen months old. Everybody in the trailer park that we live in is having problems. Somebody's been sick at some time or another in the last two and a half to three months. It's been an ongoing problem for years, and we just ask that you people help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Dolkwitz. I'm at eight oh five Highway Ten West, Number Twenty-six, Missoula Village West Trailer Park. We're asking a couple of things of your elected officials. First, would you please write an official letter from the city council owners to Ray Bean and Jim McDonald? We do have the addresses for you to send them to. We're asking you to please ask them to meet with the health department's regulations and for them to fix the violations found against them. Please urge them to meet with us, the Residents Association, at Missoula Village West Trailer Court, as we are just seeking decent living conditions, just as you yourselves have. Secondly, this is a situation that never should have happened. The sewer problems that we have had are disgusting, and we don't want to see anyone else have to have this problem, and we don't want to have to have it come again. We would ask you in joining us and the health department, the county commissioners, to please provide adequate staffing for more than one inspection per year on all trailer courts in the city. We need your help to make sure that critical health hazards do not happen again. Please, we urge you to write the letter to the owners, asking them to meet with us and clean up the hell and her, health hazards promptly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Cindy Polinski. I live at eight twenty-five Southwest Higgins. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the city council for all of your help and interest in the Hillside contract negotiations. As many of you know, um, Hillside workers voted a couple of weeks ago, forty-three to five, to settle their contract. Workers received, um, between fifty and eighty cent raise for this year and the first group health insurance that they've ever had. Health insurance will cost them five dollars a month, so I want to thank you again. The second thing I would like to say is that, um, throughout the Hillside contract negotiations, one of the most important tools that the nursing home workers had was, um, cable access TV with MCAT. Through, um, coming here and making reports, the Missoula community was able to watch cable TV and understand what was happening at Hillside. Through a show on MCAT called, um, Labor Vision, workers were able to have their own show and talk about issues important to them. And I remember the first time they were on, a resident from Hillside Manor Nursing Home actually called them up from her bed and said, "I just want to tell you that what you do as nursing home workers is really important, and, um, I've never had a chance to talk to you." Um, that very same show on MCAT, um, a doctor called and said, "I also want you workers to know that we really support you." I know tonight, people are going to be discussing the future of MCAT. I feel like it is incumbent on all of you to support the station because low-income folks would have no voice in Missoula if not for that station. Thank you.
My name is Jim Parker. I live at nine thirty-five Warden, and I'm here also to support MCAT, um, particularly a recent example of what MCAT provides for low-income people and residents throughout the city and county. Um, I documented what happened at Missoula Village West Trailer Park, and it was only because I'm a producer with Missoula Community Access TV that I was able to do that and that we're going to be able to use that as evidence in a court of law when they try to bring their court owners to justice and to improve their living conditions in Missoula and in the county. I think it's extremely impo, uh, im- important that we have television that feeds the interests of all people, not just those that are interested in what the network has to offer, because these are real people with real concerns and real needs, and there is no way that their interests will be shown if not for Missoula Community Access TV. So I urge you also to please support the interests of Missoula Community Access TV. Over the years, the last couple of years, I've been able to film musical recitals in Missoula. I've been able to, uh, do bluegrass festivals to share with the people of Montana and in Missoula. I've been able to, uh, film, uh, speakers from other states speaking about healthcare crisis, Governor Lamb when he was here, and many, many others. And there's no way that people would see that in Missoula, those that can't get out, that can't afford some of the admission prices without Missoula Community Access TV. So I urge you to think beyond some of the, what I consider very shallow criticisms of MCAT and think about the broader agenda that this television station serves all the people in Missoula and Missoula County. Thank you.
John Fletcher, eight hundred Chestnut. Your last meeting was, uh, my last meeting, working the board outside as Lori Hudak's assistant for your, um, MCAT coverage of council meetings. I'd like to introduce you to Neil Leathers, who will be replacing me. He's been chosen by the League of Women Voters, and, uh, will, uh, be sitting out there from here on.
Thank you, John. Welcome, Neil, but I do want to say thanks, John, for all of your hard work.
I'm Neil Leathers from one two oh three five Pleasant Meadows in Lolo, and I will be taking over and trying to keep up the good work and let the city council look as good as it always has on Missoula Community Access Television. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, I'll try to make this short, and I'm just reading off what I, I.
We need your name.
The topic is writing.
Could we get your name and address, please?
Uh, Tom Graham, uh, two hundred Hillen Court, Missoula. Uh, my cycle is, is a main means of transportation to me. Is I, I'm on a fixed income because of cancer. About a mu, month and a half ago, I turned left off the street and pulled into the driveway behind Warden's to get some pasta. It was about seven-thirty PM after business hours. No one, no one was on the sidewalk. Uh, I was riding at or below walking speed. There were two cycle officers at the, at the corner. Officer Scobie immediately wrote me a ticket for riding on the sidewalk. I know what the law is, I just think he should have issued me a warning before giving me a ticket. Uh, Mr. Scobie and his partner were at the corner. He issued me another citation and detained me for fifteen minutes to see if I was a criminal. At this moment in time, his partner shot off down the sidewalk. Uh, what's going on here? The total fine was thirty dollars, nearly ten percent of my monthly income. Subsequently, my cycle has been stolen and not found by Officer Scobie or his partner. It's been seen locked up by two friends of mine in the alley behind Maxwell's Tavern and, uh, and Santorino's, what, same area. So I'm just kind of wondering what these guys are doing.
Well, we have had very, very substantial complaints for a long time and increasing, um, during the last year about people riding on the bicy, riding bicycles on sidewalks, especially downtown. It's a very substantial hazard, um, to all pedestrians, and it's, uh, it's something that, uh, had become of, of such major significance and major concern that, uh, when we did get a bicycle patrol, we specifically asked that, uh, that this be one of the issues that was addressed. Uh, that the specifics of, of any particular incident, uh, I can't speak to, but the policy in general is one that we are quite firm about and, and want to spread the word about, that it is in fact illegal to ride on sidewalks downtown, uh, and that, uh, we will continue to enforce that. If it, if you do have any specifics about your particular situation, uh, our police department is very open about hearing about them, and I would encourage you to go and, and see the chief of police. And thank you for bringing us your comments this evening. Mrs. Campbell? Just a moment, Alice. Mrs. Gingarelli?
Um, Mr. Graham, I remember you gave me a call, um, probably two months ago, and I just wanted to let you know that I did bring that issue up in the Public Safety Committee and talk to, uh, Chief, Chief Oberhofer about the possibility of warnings, and he did seem very amenable to talking about that, so I wanted you to know that that, that happened, and I'd encourage you to call him also.
Mrs. Campbell?
Uh, I'm Alice Campbell. I'm from Hoard Two. I live at sixteen eighteen Sherwood, and, uh, I came to, uh, speak on behalf of Missoula Community Access Television. Uh, I just can't understand at all why there should be any opposition on the city council to MCAT. It has been, uh, very informative to the people, and it's representative of the people. Uh, it gives us a, an opportunity to get out the needs of the community. Uh, there's always needs for all the people, particularly the children, and the areas of environment, and, uh, the chemicals that are being spread around, and people need that access. So I think that for the Miss, Missoula City Council to take that away from the people would be really more than the people would stand for.
Any further citizen comment?
My name's Neil Chase of three twenty-eight Stevens Avenue, and, uh, I'm here to speak up on behalf of the MCAT, that, uh, we have had several different educational and religious programs on that show, on that station that have gotten a lot of positive feedback from the audience, and I feel that it would be a shame, uh, for us to lose, uh, a base where we can have diversified opinions and debating and, uh, educational programming that can come directly from the grassroots of the citizenship, uh, in, uh, Missoula City, and, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Jonkel?
I'm Charles Jonkel. I live at eight thirty Evans, and I wanted to say a few words on behalf of MCAT as well. As you probably all know, I'm, I've been doing the International Wild Film Festival in Missoula for, well, fifteen years now, and certainly the fact that Missoula is so sensitized to film because of the festival and has become, um, probably one of the most advanced cities in, in the country, if not the world, in terms of being discerning relative to what you're seeing on, on television because of the practice that we have these fifteen years. What I see happening now is, um, is, A, that, uh, the festival certainly has helped MCAT to be one of the most successful community access televisions anywhere in the country, but now MCAT is, is, uh, in the film festival are, are having an influence, I think that's probably not too well-known, but we're, we're right this very time, the, the pioneers in, in, um, bringing the understanding of film to, uh, to schools and to teachers and to students, so. Film isn't even taught, uh, um, in schools, um, it's not even taught in the courses that are taught teachers at the University of Montana, and still more people, every day, every hour, every minute, are watching more and more television without any, any training how to be a watcher. And what I see happening right now is, uh, a tremendous opportunity for Missoula again to be at the forefront of, uh, of, um, of learning how to teach film in school, uh, through making film as well as watching film, and I think it's an extremely important thing since, uh, gradually, everybody's abandoning libraries and books and turning to television. I don't particularly like that, but that is what's happening. Here we have a chance to, uh, to be at the forefront and, and leading people to, uh, to learn how to handle what comes off the tube, and it's extremely important. If you, if you have any sense of, of how many distortions there are and how many untrue things are, are programmed these days and can be done instantly with a combination of stored information in computers and the, and the, and the technology of television itself, there's a tremendous need for people to be more discerning in what they watch and see, and I think that, uh, between the film festival and MCAT, we have a wonderful opportunity here, and I certainly hope that the city will continue to support it the way they have in the past. Thank you. now MCAT is in the film festival are having an influence, I think that's probably not too well-known, but we're right this very time, the pioneers in bringing the understanding of film to schools and to teachers and to students. Film isn't even taught in schools. It's not even taught in the courses that are taught teachers at the University of Montana. And still more people, every day, every hour, every minute, are watching more and more television without any training how to be a watcher. And what I see happening right now is a tremendous opportunity for Missoula again to be at the forefront of learning how to teach film in school through making film as well as watching film, and I think it's an extremely important thing since gradually everybody's abandoning libraries and books and turning television. I don't particularly like that, but that is what's happening. Here we have a chance to be at the forefront in leading people to learn how to handle what comes off the tube, and it's extremely important. If you have any sense of how many distortions there are and how many untrue things are programmed these days and can be done instantly with a combination of stored information in computers and the technology of television itself, there's a tremendous need for people to be more discerning in what they watch and see, and I think that between film festival and MCAT, we have a wonderful opportunity here, and I certainly hope that the city will continue to support it the way they have in the past. Thank you.
Hello, the council mayor. My name's Rich Doyle, and I live at 740 East Front in Missoula. I've enjoyed using Missoula Community Access TV, and I think it's very important to this community and to the countries, to the country. There are many stations like public access stations across the country springing up, and we should realize that we live in an age where the media is becoming much more centralized than ever before in TV, radio, and newspapers, and stations like public access TV are vital to democracy, and anyone critical of this community access TV, I think is very narrow-minded and overlooks, it's a criticism of democracy to criticize, to not like this is to not like democracy, in my opinion. It's a, we have to, democracy is learning how to tolerate one another, how to understand one another, is part of what this country is about, and it doesn't happen on commercial TV. Another thing that's neat about MCAT is that, I don't expect that commercial TV is, would be out there as much covering some of the treasures that happen, like the Karis Park stuff is reshown on MCAT. And I had the fortune of going up and filming Dr. John Ellis in the bell tower a year ago, and as you know, we lost this man this last week, and he was a treasure himself, and he brought the life of that treasure up in Main Hall, and I, we'll be able to show it on Missoula Community Access TV, probably a 20-minute concert of his inside the bell tower, and it's just marvelous to see how well, what a master that guy was as a musician and a wonderful man. And I, you know, I have to, a lot, I have to thank you, council and MCAT for being able to, look forward to presenting this show on John Ellis, and that's just one drop of many things that it's so easy to cover and show back to our Missoula neighbors that otherwise I'm pretty sure just wouldn't be on commercial TV, and I just am here tonight to speak for keeping MCAT going. It's alive and well, and there's no reason to criticize it that I can think of. I'm really ashamed that anyone could be criticizing it in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tammy Reynolds, and I live at Missoula Village West Toyota Park. First of all, I wanted to say how I really appreciate how the Health Department has stepped in and helped us as much as they have, but two months ago, I called them and let them know that the Health Department, that we had raw sewage underneath of our homes and that our families were in danger of this, and they, what their response was to me is that they could come out and that they could look at it and they could clean it up, but at my expense, and this couldn't be done, and so singly that nothing was done about it, and so we had to, all of us band together and have an association formed in order to have our voices to be heard. I, through this, I had my family over from Salt Lake and from Chinook, and they had to go and seek other living because they couldn't live in my home because of the problems that we've had, and I've asked the management, or the owners, Ray Bean, and I haven't Jim McDonald, but he is also, to help us with this problem, and their response is that they are on top of it, but really they're not because it's gotten really bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Jared Little. I live in 924 Dixon Avenue, and I am in opposition of MCAT as it now is. I am what I would believe to be an artist. I participated this last year in a art class that allowed me to produce my own movie, and I believe in the freedom of speech and press, and I believe that in community access television, but often I see, when I turn the TV on, things that are not reflective of the community. I see religious programming, as this gentleman has stated, which offends me in particular because it is very anti-my religion, and it states that. I believe that freedom is not a permit to self-indulgence, and a program on MCAT Beer Talk, obviously, I mean, self-indulgence, increased funding for this community access television does not, that does not reflect the values and the morals of the community is not only mockery of the intelligence of our community, but is a waste of our taxes. For five years, it's been going on, and a half million dollars of taxes of the community has been spent. I believe myself and the 99.7% of the people who do not watch Missoula Community Access Television believe that this is a waste as it now is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Larry Campbell, and I'd just like to testify for the MCAT. Right now, we're in the midst of, there's a small disaster happening down in the Bitterroot where, over which Crick is flooded and caused a lot of destruction, and the media has had difficulty in covering it. There's been just short film on the TV. It's real difficult access, but a couple of the cameramen from MCAT took their time out and got down there and got in there and covered it in much broader scope than it had been by the commercial television, and I think that the public would have, it's relatively impossible for the public to get in there and see for themselves what's going on, so it's an invaluable tool for the community to learn about what's going on, and it's, I just wanted to speak up for it now because it's an ongoing issue, and I'm really grateful that MCAT is here to get the word out to the Missoula community. Thank you.
Mr. Camp- Mr. Campbell, we need your address for the record.
My name is Roman Kuzzer, and I live at 28 South Third West, and I wanted to make a few remarks in support of MCAT. Specifically dealing with that issue of viewership that seems to have cropped up a lot in the media in some of the discussions here tonight. I produced a video for Partners in Home Care that in effect reaches an audience that's not readily counted by viewership on cable access. This video is presented to various community organizations on a regular basis that, again, was not, I think, addressed at any count, and I specifically referring to, I think, a deal, a survey that the Missoulian did, and made a lot of, got a lot of mileage out of that as a reason for questioning not only the validity and benefit of MCAT to the community, but its very existence, which prompted me to write my first editorial or response to an editorial ever. There's another video that I have in process or progress, I should say, for hospice, and it's definitely a community effort. There are a lot of people involved, including one of the city council members here, and I really feel like projects like this would be impossible to produce with some of the budget that nonprofit organizations have, or don't have, I should say. And I think it's really a benefit to the community to have that service, and I think it's really important to continue supporting MCAT, especially when you get in front of these cameras and make some remarks and realize there are a lot of people watching, a lot more people watching than used to listen on KUFM. I made a little note here, it says, we still have, fortunately, we still have freedom of speech, but it takes some money to make it heard, and I think MCAT gives us an alternative as people who can't afford the expense of traditional media. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marilyn Olson, and I live on the West Fork. My address is simply West Fork Road, Darby, Montana, and I don't even own a television set, but in the last month, I've had an opportunity to work with the MCAT folks twice in helping to protect wild lands, and I don't want to see that opportunity taken away. I think you owe it to the viewers regionally for them to have an alternative besides the traditional media. They need to know what's happening out there, and the folks at MCAT get that across. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Angela Helby, 902 Grand, Missoula, 59802. My experience with MCAT has been working on a gardening video, and I feel that the person that was expressing his opinion about the morals and values when he turns on the TV and sees an MCAT production, to me, it seems that it runs a wide gamut, and gardening is one example of this because anybody can basically be a gardener, but I feel that the religious programming has its place. If somebody wants to put that on, then they are certainly entitled to do that, and if someone wishes to put on another type of educational program, then they have every right to do that as well, and I think it's a really good forum for this community, and I really hope it grows for many different reasons. I think Missoula's a real cultural place, and people recognize it as such, and it's really important to keep that viable, and this is one way to do that. And also, I wanted to mention, I have a friend who just did her thesis on ways to improve MCAT, and I think it certainly has, that there are certainly ways that it could be improved, but this thesis is available to check out in the library, and perhaps some of these ideas can be used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Blue Tanteri. I live at 827 Woody. I'm a producer at MCAT. I produced several videos in conjunction with the Missoula County Conservation District on Spotted Nap Reed and one on the Clark Fork River as part of a Clark Fork Watershed Education Project. These wouldn't be possible, these videos would not have been possible without the facilities of MCAT, and right now, they are in use. The Clark Fork Watershed Education Project is being used all up and down the Clark Fork River from Butte to up to Frenchtown. We hope to bring that, actually, we hope to bring that statewide, but without MCAT facilities, there is just, there is no way those videos could be made because there's just not money without MCAT facilities. Also, I wanted to echo what Chuck Jonkel had to say. I really think that part of what MCAT does is teach people, like over 900 people right now, what television is all about, and I think that is so important in our day and age, that people watch TV, and unless they know how it's made, they can get fooled by TV. And once you see backstage, and once you see what actually goes on, you look at all TV with a different eye, and I think that's one of the things that MCAT does, and I think that that's one of the reasons that you should be supported. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Debbie Bartlett. I live at 1955 Honeyberg. I come here as a business owner in Missoula. I own Deb's Auto Buff. I have done voluntary work at MCAT, and I think it's very important for Missoula to have it. I've heard some people say negative things about MCAT and some of the things that have been on there. My viewpoint on it is you can do one of several things. You can use your remote and change the channel. You can sit back and complain to other people of what's on it, or you can get busy and put something on that you want to see. I encourage you to keep it, and thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Meese, PO Box 7941, Missoula. I don't really know where to begin. I've heard no quality comes out of MCAT. I've produced a video called "Crying Out for Survival," the Blackfeet Indian of Montana, which first aired here and then was shown in Geneva, Switzerland at the Human Rights Committee meeting in Geneva, Switzerland. I've been over to Sarawak, Malaysia, and shot video, which I then produced the video called SOS Sarawak. Your committee itself, I came forward with this information I gained through, partially through MCAT going to Sarawak, and you all passed a resolution about it, supporting Jake Krylik while he was in prison over there. I can't understand why you would take away such a great community service and to even think that it's a waste of money or a waste of our time or anything in that fashion. It's an educational value. We are educating people to the issues that our mainstream medias are never covering, and this is, this is an information gatherer that can't be done without, and for you to take away this right of our community, and like so many people have said, if you don't like what's on it, produce whatever you want and put it on yourself, but the key is here, to take away that American right of ours is to not be an American, and if you're not American, why are you on our city council? Thank you.
Noticed a number of comments this evening about a threat to take away MCAT. I'm not at all sure where that's coming from. There is a motion that will come up later, having to do with a request for increased funding, and during my comments, I will say something about that, but it appears to me that there's information out that the council has some action under consideration that would take away MCAT. The council actually has provided the community with MCAT by entering into a franchise agreement and by providing $100,000 a year for MCAT. So on behalf of my friends on the council, I feel that unless I'm missing something, that the suggestion that the council is considering taking away MCAT is perhaps a little misplaced, and it might be that people want to address themselves to the issue that really is before the council. Yes?
My name is Dave Cornell of 1830 South Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of MCAT also. Recently, as you all well know, the tax levy bill had failed, I believe it's in April, the school tax levy, and I was contacted a short time later, being a producer of MCAT, I was contacted to give the background of this tax levy issue. It seems like most of Missoula doesn't understand what the, what all of the taxes were about, what it entailed. Now, I had an opportunity of producing a show for MCAT that helped educate the public about the school tax levies, and this wouldn't have been possible without MCAT and the facilities they provide, the equipment that they have. A lot of the equipment is getting, is older, it's older equipment, and it needs to be upgraded. I know that they're short a camcorder, and they've been talking about buying a new one, and I think that you should make some serious consideration about this proposal coming forward. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
My name is Lana Elson. I'm in the eighth grade, and I live at 834 Van Buren, and I'd like to speak for MCAT also. About two years ago, I took a course on filmmaking that was sponsored by MCAT, and then through the use of MCAT's equipment, I made an award-winning film on the environment. I've really enjoyed seeing my film on MCAT's channel on TV, and I think that MCAT is an excellent opportunity for other kids in Missoula because it doesn't cost anything and that allows them to learn to use a camera and editing equipment that's not usually available, and through this, you learn how films are made, and then seeing their film on TV is an especially good reward for hard work on something fun and that is worthwhile, and I hope that the city council will continue to support MCAT.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's David Owen. I represent my employer, the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. MCAT wasn't specifically listed as a hearing, but we have talked about this at some recent board meetings. I'd like to share that perspective. It's not uncommon, I find myself in a minority at times like this. Tonight seems to be distinctly that way. I appreciate Mayor Camus' comment about no one suggesting that MCAT be ta- I appreciate Mayor Camus' comment about no one suggesting that MCAT be taken away, and certainly the Board of Directors of the Chamber would not favor eliminating MCAT. They are, however, concerned at the level of investment that's been spent on MCAT during the initial contract, which has taken at least almost all of the initial amount of money that that franchise fee was going to raise. The Chamber has a long history of supporting the concept of a franchise fee. The Chamber has a long history of supporting the idea of local access cable TV. The Chamber's counsel to this group was spent half of the initial money to set up cable TV, and that would have been about $50,000 a year. I recently asked the Board of Directors if their feelings had changed, and they said that they really had not. And as I sit and listen to these people, and I think about the enormity of the task of setting up cable TV, it may be appropriate that such a high amount was spent initially because you have a new concept, you have a backlog of people who need to be trained, folks producing shows, some very good, some not. So I don't think it's a debate about do we want cable TV from the Board of Directors of the Chamber's standpoint. I do, however, think that it is a very legitimate debate about what priority are you going to place on local access cable TV? We're talking about $100,000 a year. And that's not all of the, all of the costs of this. If the information that I have is correct, the show that many people are watching today, tonight, and this show at the council meeting is one of the highest values I see on MCAT, probably the highest viewership that it has, although I don't know that there's any reason to believe more people watch it than used to listen on KUFM. I'm not sure that that's a substantial, or a substantiable claim. But I think it is, it's a value. But it's a value that's receiving some investment either from the council or the League of Women Voters or elsewhere to pay for some producers to make this possible. When we talk about, as we will in the next hearing on the budget, $10,000 for economic development, when we talk about $16,000 for housing task force, having to increase fees at the office of community development, I think you can see with a feeling that $100,000 for cable TV may be a little over expended. We're talking about the ability to have four or five firefighters, four or five police departments. I know I'm limited in time, Mr. Mayor, so I'll just end with this kind of disturbing thought. I've heard a number of times through history that you cannot criticize MCAT if you believe in democracy, and I think there's a threat that's a little bit higher and broader to democracy than questioning the funding of local access television, and that's the creation of an institution that we dare not criticize publicly. I look forward to a debate on the amount that this community should spend on cable TV, and I think it should be reflective of the investment that we've made in other places, a little bit less than is currently being funded.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Mark Healan at 233 Dixon here in Missoula. I too am a business owner. Over the last few weeks, I've done an informal poll of my own, asking individuals, what do you think about MCAT? And about 90% of the response was, what is an MCAT? They thought I was going to tell them a joke. In fact, I feel that it's very important. I agree with Mr. Owens from the standpoint that MCAT television is important in this community. However, at the funding level that it is currently at, we have to start asking some hard facts. Right now, our legislature is in a special session over in Helena. We're looking at dramatic cuts in our state budget. We're looking at a number of programs in our educational field that are currently under attack, and we're sitting here talking about a program that has value to this community. However, I have to question the fact of a 28% increase in that funding as being the talked about level of increased funding for this program. It is something that right now, we're looking at, on an average, we've got about 42 hours of viewership during a week. We're looking at premier locally-produced programs of about one hour a week out of that 42 hours. The rest are imported or reruns of currently-produced programs. I have to question about the viewership. In my informal poll, I looked at it and talked to these people, and did not get a response back on MCAT from the majority of my customers. So I have to question if, in fact, we are at a viewership rate other than for very specific types of programs, of even 1% of this community actually watching this program. I do not dispute the fact that a number of these programs have great value to our community. However, to increase funding with this type of, type of budgetary constraints that are upon us now in this city, this county, this state, and this nation, we have to take a good, hard look at what we're doing with our money. And quite frankly, I feel that at this point, we have to put the brakes on this type of spending and look at and become physically responsible here in Missoula, Montana. I thank you for the time, and I would urge you all to limit the funding on MCAT. Thank you.
Mr. Brnovsky.
My name is Gene Brnovsky. I live at 243 Evans. And I just want to thank MCAT for giving the opportunity for David Owens to speak his criticism of the channel. Thank you.
My name is Gene Bueller, and I live at 120 Bannock Place. And I'm here, I'm a manager of a major retailer in the unit, in this community, and also a father, and also involved in many community activities. They're involved with drug and alcohol-related and forums for parents in the high school. And as I visit many of those activities, I find a great concern about funding for all the various activities that this community tries to produce and put together. And one particular activity that I'm closely related to is drug and alcohol abuse and prevention and care. And we find that we need to go elsewhere to find our funding. We don't come to the city council and ask for that funding. And I think that if a program really has value to the community, that the community ought to support it from that standpoint, rather than for what I perceive as legislating a concept. Freedom is important to us. As I've listened to the people from MCAT and the things that they've produced, I've seen a great deal of potential value and real value to the community and to the people. But when we look at funding and what perhaps an additional $28,000 could do if it was channeled some other direction, or $100,000 that we have initially programmed over a five-year period with decreasing after five years, I'm really concerned about how that funding could be channeled into other sources that might provide the same forum of intellectual freedom and sharing that forum, but without increasing or causing a separate organization to exist that we must continue to fund and continue to feed, and from a consumer standpoint, relatively few people in the community being consumers. I would encourage the council not to increase the funding and continue on with their current proposal of decreasing the funding after the five-year program is over. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Taylor. I live at 710 South 4th West. I was recently talking to a friend of mine who is familiar with the Community Access Station in the Denver, Colorado metropolitan area. That access station has been in operation long enough that they are finding that their equipment has gotten old, has been used to the point now that it spends much of its time in repair. I ask you to consider that the equipment has been purchased new, but because of the amount of use that it receives, that it is reaching a point now, it's not something that, as a private citizen, you just go out and use a few times a year. I don't have the figures of how often it is checked out. But I do know that if equipment is not increased, and that if the funding for the staff is not increased, then we will find more and more times as producers that when we go and we want to check the equipment out, it will be in repair. And when the equipment is in repair, then there is a situation that has occurred in our community that has not been allowed to be given a voice. And therefore, I ask you to seriously consider and realize that we are talking about an increased use of this station, and that increased use will demand to have materials available and staff available so that the people will continue to have a voice.
Any other public comment?
My name is Richard Kushel. My business address is 118 West Pine downtown. I have a recording studio, and there are two things that I can testify to. One is that equipment maintenance is certainly very important. In my studio, it's probably the highest cost that I have. I'd love to buy new stuff all the time. I can't do it. I have to repair the old stuff, and that's the way it goes. The other thing is that I feel that MCAT is very valuable, if for nothing else, in that broadcasts these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, I'm Mike Fellows. My address is PO Box 403. And I recently had the chance to attend the Montana State AFL CEO convention where we had passed a resolution in support of community access television. And in response to Mayor Camus' world class city, we are a world class city, in fact, that we've spent a number of hours at that convention talking about public access and how other communities could get public access. We've heard from such communities as Butte, of course, Great Falls already has one, Billings has one, but other communities that don't have one, and they were really in awe of Missoula as it stands. And I think that stands well for Missoula, and I think that's why a lot of people stay here in Missoula, because of all activities that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I think we may hear a little bit more on this issue when we get to the public hearing on the budget. Before we leave the public comments, though, there's something that has struck me real forcefully about the comments this evening. First of all, those who have been here, and we appreciate your being here from the trailer court, realize that that court is not inside the city. Nevertheless, we do, we welcome your comments and are glad to hear about it, and because we do co-direct the city-county health department, I think it's important that we hear from you. But of course, you do, you are not under the city's direct jurisdiction. Many of you who testified on behalf of MCAT also either live outside the city or spoke of issues that you have been interested in that are issues that take place outside the city. Well, I want to talk during my comments a little bit about MCAT and the city's relation to it. I think that this is a good opportunity to point out that there is, in fact, a very accessible and utterly appropriate way for MCAT supporters to increase their funding base. The county has the power to franchise as the city has done. We have spoken to the county innumerable times about adopting their own franchise so that those people who are receiving the benefits of MCAT, who live outside the city limits, would also have the opportunity to support this facility. The possibility there of raising substantially in excess of $28,000 is something that I would direct your attention to. It worries me a little bit to have a tone here as if the city government is not supportive of MCAT, when in fact, it's city government that has made community access programming possible at all. And I don't at all mind having people express their opinions, but I think it would be fair to point out that if, in fact, you want to expand the funding base, then it seems to me that what you might want to consider doing is going to that government which has the power to expand the funding base and give people who are receiving the benefits of MCAT an opportunity to contribute to it. We'll go on now to public hearings. Our first hearing is on a resolution of intention to extend the corporate limits of the city of Missoula to incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula a certain tract of land which is wholly surrounded by the city and describing the boundaries thereof. This is lots 12 to 14, Block S, car line number three. Is there a staff report? Is there any public comment? If not, then we'll close the hearing. Our next hearing is a public hearing on the fiscal year 1993 executive budget. Mr. Sterns?
This is the optional first public hearing of the city council on the upcoming budget process. It's on the mayor's executive budget of $19,651,757. As in the past, the council has typically adopted the mayor's executive budget as the preliminary budget, and then held the public hearings on that, despite the fact that the total budget will go up from the $19 million up to about $40 million during the next few weeks as the council budgets for all the other funds, other than the general fund, the sewer fund, and the tax increment fund, and a couple others that are part of the $19 million here. We have handouts over on the side table that has the mayor's budget message, some budget highlights showing the important aspects of this budget, as well as some of the numbers. It's important to realize that during the next few weeks, the council will adopt budgets for all the other funds. For example, the cable TV fund, which is separate from the general fund and separate from the sewer and all the other funds, is not yet budgeted because we take the practice of waiting until after July 1st, when we know all the year-end cash balances, to budget what we would consider the minor funds or the funds that don't file property taxes. So during the next few weeks, the council will consider all these other budgets and adopt all the budgets prior to when they adopt the final budget, which is tentatively scheduled for August 3rd. There will be a second public hearing, most likely on July 27th at noon and 7:30. Those are the statutory dates for public hearings on the official budget. But having the council adopt the preliminary budget as the mayor's executive budget saves reproduction and printing costs. We do have to make copies of the preliminary budget available for the public, and we do so with the mayor's executive budget. It's quite thick, and to make extra copies later after some council changes just makes it a little more difficult. This budget has a number of issues in it, which I won't try to describe here so much, but more to invite the public and the citizens to become involved, either by picking up the handouts that are on the side table that highlight the major issues of the budget, or come in. We have about five or six copies of the entire mayor's proposed budget available for checkout upstairs. It's several hundred pages long, but if you can just look at the summary and introductory materials, it's actually very well summarized in those. So with that, I can answer questions and discuss about some major issues, but copies are available for checkout.
Now, is there any public comment at this stage in the budget proceedings? Mr. Kushman?
My name is Bob Kushman. I'm vice president of the MCAT board, and I live at 1700 Howell Street. At the June 26 meeting of the city council cable TV committee, the committee voted not to reopen the MCAT franchise as we requested so we could ask for an increase in funding. However, at that time, Alderman Sampson strongly urged us to bring the request directly to this hearing, and that's what I'm doing here tonight. I'd like to read the following, our official position that we are making, our request for more funding. for more funding. MCAT wishes to open its contract with the city for the following reasons. Signing its contract with MCAT, the city has grown by 28%, primarily due to annexation, and MCAT is obligated to serve this additional population. During the same period, the city's income from franchise fees has risen 43%, again due primarily to annexation. The city now collects $160,000 in these fees. MCAT has been overwhelmed by public demand for its services. Training sessions alone have exceeded our contractual obligations by 2,000%. Over 11,000 hours of editing time has been supplied, and 969 people have been trained and have checked out equipment 1,653 times. In order to continue its present level of service, MCAT requires an additional 28% in its funding. This will leave the city with $30,000 to administer its TCI franchise. MCAT further believes that the city should establish a new position of governmental access coordinator paid for from franchise fees so that the city can make more complete use of its access facility and make government more accessible to the public. Now, I have been asked by an ad hoc group calling itself the Friends of MCAT to introduce several additional speakers. However, most of them took the opportunity during the public comment period, to my great surprise, to speak to you. And frankly, those speakers were all unexpected, and I found it very gratifying to hear what they had to say. But in response, Mayor Chemist, to your one statement about the county, I would add that we too at MCAT have made innumerable requests to the county to franchise cable television. And their response has generally been that they do not have the legal authority or power to do this. Now, at some time in the past, the people who initially supported the establishment of access television in Missoula got an attorney general's opinion contrary to that. However, the county commissioners have never been very agreeable to taking up this effort. We would like to see them do it. And I think it would perhaps be very, I would urge you to yourself, urge them to go about franchiseing cable television. So are there any questions at all? And I'd also like to add that the MCAT Board has never represented to anyone that the funding for MCAT itself was in jeopardy. All we have said is that we want to get this additional $28,000, which we desperately do need, as a matter of fact. I would like to introduce the one remaining speaker who didn't already speak, and that's Laura Rose, a program manager at Missoula's Women's Opportunity and Resource Development Organization.
Is MCAT's entire budget funded from the city's franchise contract, or do you have other funding sources?
The vast bulk of it is. There is some extra money that comes in from a slight profit on tape sales, which we do because we are the only people who can supply a certain kind of tape, basically SVHS tapes. We do sell some to some producers. And a few, a little money comes in from t-shirt sales and stuff like that.
So you have not found other grant sources available to MCAT?
Mary Canty was on the MCAT staff. It's presently working on a grant, and I don't know the full details of that, so I don't want to speak about it. But this involves MCAT going into the schools, and there have been some matching monies promised by, I think, through the high school. If you have any more specific questions, you could ask Margaret Kingsland, who is the chairman of the MCAT Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Laura? Oh, more questions. Mr. Sampson?
How much, approximately, what was the value of the equipment that you got to initiate MCAT?
I'm not certain of that. I think $170,000 was received from TCI under their, under the charter, but there was some additional money spent. We're in the third year of the contract. We've been on the air for two years, so some of the money that we received during the first year went to purchase equipment that was needed to set up the facility.
Have you set up any depreciation or reserve for?
Yeah, there is a reserve fund, and one of the problems we have is that we don't feel we're able to put sufficient monies aside in that reserve fund at this point.
How much are you putting in reserve?
We have been putting away $10,000 a year to that. But again, if you need more details on that, you could ask Margaret Kingsland.
Mrs. Gingerelli?
This would be a question for Mrs. Kingsland. I received a call from a constituent last week who was telling me something about the arrangement with Missoula District One's elementary schools and also Missoula County High Schools, and MCAT provision of services and an arrangement there. Can you describe what that is and fill us in on that?
No, I'm sorry that I can, Ms. Gingerelli. I'm the chair of the Finance Committee, but I don't, I'm not sure what program you're referring to in cooperation with the schools. We do have some funds from the Montana Arts Council that has to do with the artists in the schools program. Does that sound like what your constituent was referring to?
I don't think so. I think it was, it was some kind of an arrangement with District One and Missoula County High Schools to either go into the schools and teach the students.
That's Mary Canty's proposal.
Oh, that is, so that would be a grant?
We are working on a grant application to the coal tax fund for cultural and aesthetic projects. And as you know, those coal tax funds are one-half of 1% of the interest from the, on the tax that's charged on the mine mouth value of the coal. And those funds are allocated by the state legislature biennially. The deadline for that grant application is August 1. And my colleague, Bob Kuschel, says that our staff member, Mary Canty, is working on the development of that application, so that must be.
Okay, I know Mary. I'll call her and ask her.
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't be more specific.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Laura Rose, and I represent the staff at WORD, Women's Opportunity and Resource Development. We have central offices at 127 North Higgins and a satellite office at 345 West Front. I'm also a resident of the city of Missoula. We believe that MCAT is an invaluable asset and a resource to the community. Some of the programs that we provide through WORD, WEDGO, which is the Women's Economic Development Group assisting men and women to start small businesses, Futures, which is a teen moms program, Options, which orients every person on AFDC in the city and county of Missoula, Job Quest, which sees daily every person on general relief assistance and food stamps, and we have a new program, Non-Traditional Job Training for Women. Let me give you two examples of how MCAT has and is assisting us. In order to orient everyone on AFDC to what the mandatory requirements are for them in helping them reach self-sufficiency through employment, we have to meet with them and explain a myriad of services and requirements. Through MCAT, we have been able to produce a video that makes it considerably easier to provide this service. In the Non-Traditional Job Training Program, we are presently producing a recruitment video for women, primarily women on welfare. And in September, this video will be distributed to every job service office in the state of Montana and to every other service provider. So we feel that MCAT indirectly is contributing to the goals of assisting people on welfare get off through employment. We urge you to honor MCAT's request for additional funding. I'd like to introduce John Fletcher.
John Fletcher, 800 Chestnut. I've been asked to read a letter into the record. The author is not able to be here this evening. This is from the Alliance for the Wild Rockies. Dear council members, on behalf of the Alliance for the Wild Rockies, I would like to express our strongest support for the Missoula Community Access Television. I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's council meeting and would be happy to discuss my comments with the council. I would also like to respectfully request that the council increase MCAT's funding through the TCI franchise fee to enable MCAT to grow and expand along with the Missoula community. The Alliance is a regional conservation organization with over 150 member businesses and grassroots conservation groups and thousands of individual members and supporters throughout the Northern Rockies. We have come to rely heavily upon the production, training, and narrowcast services MCAT provides. First, we have taped and aired public forums, debates, call-in talk shows, and documentaries on conservation issues, which have informed a wide audience and stimulated public debate in the Missoula area. Second, dozens of our members, volunteers, staff, and interns have developed video skills and competence from MCAT's video production and editing training courses. This benefits our organization directly, as these people are now capable of producing their own programming. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, we have benefited from MCAT's policy of encouraging the private use of tapes produced with MCAT equipment after programs have run on access television. This policy has enabled us to distribute video footage to national media outlets, including CNN, ABC News, and public television. Each of these networks has broadcast footage from our master tapes as part of feature stories on Montana and the Northern Rockies. Not only has this helped our organization, but has focused attention on Missoula as a center of information and quality video programming. In closing, we believe the benefits to the Missoula community from the MCAT facility and staff are immense and want your full support. Sincerely, Daniel J. Funch, Program Assistant, Alliance for the Wild Rockies. If I may, I'd like to give this to the clerk to enter in the record.
Thank you, John. Is there any other public testimony on the proposed budget?
For the record, once again, my name's David Owen, representing the Chamber of Commerce. I'll shift the topic from MCAT for a while, because this is a hearing on the budget. But in shifting from MCAT, I return to some territory that is not new for the chamber and has to look at about five or six areas, six areas briefly in this budget. Let me first tell the council that the chamber and a small group of folks that we have that review the city budget truly appreciate the chance to put some comments up early, begin our involvement with the city council at this point. I still remember years ago when we showed up here rather naively at the first public hearing, and it was very late in the process, and there was kind of a reaction from the council, as well as the volunteers that had come down here with me about, geez, it's awful late to be commenting on the budget. We're going to approve it like next week or tomorrow night or whenever it was. So now we have an opportunity to begin this dialogue early. I very much appreciate and admire the staff's work, Chuck in particular, working on this budget. And I would be this candid, I mean, you're looking at a budget, as Chuck said, that starts out at about 19, you add the other funds, you get up to about $40 million. And I think if you added to some total of anything the chamber board's ever worried about in this budget, you'd probably be someplace around $120,000 over a number of years. But there are some things in here, some opportunities that we see that we'd like to begin a dialogue tonight, continue it with you on an individual basis at committee meetings over the course of the next few weeks as you arrive at your final contemplations. Starting with building inspection. Last year, the council had, and mayor's office, had allocated approximately $371,500. When you have Chuck sitting up there, I always worry about specific numbers. He'll get down to the exact penny. I may not have dug it all out either, but the point is, at the end of May, the collections were in the neighborhood of $589,000. And if June is about $44,000, which it was last year, the city should see a surplus of revenues of approximately $261,000, perhaps more. We are not, as in the past, asking the city to consider reducing that amount of money by reducing the fees. It's real obvious from our own method of analysis that if no one's complaining about the level of those fees, then the marketplace is being satisfied. So we're not going to ask you to reduce those. Instead, we would ask that the city consider holding $200,000 in a GIS reserve fund and make a tentative commitment to the funding and fulfillment of a geographic information service. There is $40,000 allocated in this budget for a consultant to begin to assemble the GIS and to take a look at what it would take for us to have this kind of a system. The thinking here is pretty direct and clear. If this is money the city has because of development-related activities, it ought to be held and vested in a way that's going to make those developments more beneficial to the city and more efficient for the people who've been doing those things. Next year's budget seems to estimate about $600,000 in income, allocates about $400,000, so if there is indeed another surplus. And I understand that the city can't guarantee that that would happen. That's one of the reasons the city's been hesitant to reduce fee levels, and that's acknowledged. But between the two years, if we take a look at those monies, we could, as a community, be well on our way to the first half million dollars of actually implementing the computer system, hardware purchase, or whatever it's going to take to have a geographic information system. And with that kind of a commitment, if there's more resources needed, I think the city could finesse some sort of commitment from the private sector in terms of utilities, in terms of developers, in terms of things like that, if the city has made these kinds of efforts. So we'll be talking to you about that. There was a concern by some new members on our budget review committee about the number of people hired on temporary money, specifically the money from the EPA to deal with CO. From an historical perspective, I guess we've seen a number of programs start with temporary money, and then the money ends, and we struggle to continue those programs. Would cite as examples the bike coordinator program, again, the beneficiary of some of this money. As another example, I see that we're allocating $25,743 for the Northwest Energy Code Program, which initially carried its own income. That income disappeared a while back, and we continue to allocate money to fulfill that program. So just a caution, and admittedly, we need to learn more about what some of those allocations were for, but it was a comment several members of the committee had made, so I pass those along. Non-departmental allocations show again $10,000 for economic development. I would like to reinforce the mayor's comment at a committee meeting, that the city strive for a level of about $7,500 is an ongoing commitment to MEDC. The chamber has supported some funding of the Missoula Economic Development Corporation for many years. We'd like, one, we appreciate Mayor Chemist for that. Two, we would encourage you to move towards that. There is a strong level of support for some consideration for the fire bond issue. I have asked both our Governmental Affairs Council, as well as the General Board of Directors, what should the city do when it comes to a bond issue this fall? And with an overwhelming vote on stroke tallies and comments around the table, the chamber board believes that if it's time to implement some longstanding planning when it comes to fire bond issues, that option one should be pursued, or at least discussed thoroughly. The chamber is also interested in continuing its involvement with the government bodies to kind of sort out what bond issues are needed, when are they needed? Can we come up with a community plan that will bring these things up in a logical order so that we can get coordination at that kind of election and campaigning to assure that we don't see a repeat of what we saw this spring, which is, in the mind of the chamber board at least, was a feeding frenzy where everybody was after everything and nobody got anything. So we will continue in the near future to invite government units to come in and talk about some of that information, which I believe was shared with you in terms of what bond issues might be upcoming. Many of the new committee members I have this year reviewing this budget were extremely impressed with the financial soundness of this city. Surprised, relieved, and compliment the administration. I would revisit MCAT only to reiterate that the chamber would not support reopening the contract, except to make it smaller, that MCAT isn't the only agency that has increased a demand for their services with annexation over the course of time, and we've heard it from a lot of agencies. And I think that the illusion that because that's cable franchise fee, MCAT has some kind of local access TV, even if it's with another not-for-profit group, would have first claim to that money or a higher claim than others, is in error. And we consider that general fund money that you allocate like anything else, and we encourage you to view it that way. Final comment is regarding the $6 million for a portion of the $30 million for carbon monoxide. Nothing very specific, except to share what I would honestly tell you has been a higher-than-normal level of phone calls and comments at meetings at the chamber regarding where that money is going to be put. And a real concern that we are going to, in fulfilling whatever mandates are there, get so excited about bus service, get so excited about bicycles, that we're going to forget that for the foreseeable future, the majority of the people of this valley are going to use cars to commute, and we need to be aimed, most of this money, at solving the problem that the cars produce in a way that is friendly and in a way that's supportive of automobileist transportation. Particularly when the Walmart issue came up, where we saw now a health department employee making traffic allocations to intersections based on numbers and not the model that's in hand. I think you have a real challenge with the City-County Health Department, between yourself and the county commission, between planning, between Vision 2020, to decide who's going to talk, is the authority to what. And without worrying about the conclusion on Walmart, the process of a health department coming to traffic allocations- coming to traffic allocations, when you have Mike Cress as a traffic planner not making any comments at all, causes at least a level of confusion. And I've had a number of phone calls, and I would represent it to you as higher than normal, like a lot of people call me and complain about this place, I don't know why, talking about if we've got a problem, use the money to solve the problem and they're not convinced when they first saw that list that the money is going to be spent to solve the problem that we have. We'll develop more specific reaction to that, but it's consumed about three meetings that I've had as well as the number of phone calls and I wanted, not to surprise you with that later, but to bring it here at this comment. Period. Again, thank you for your time. We will be at some of the committee meetings, we will be on the phone, inviting you to some of our meetings over the next two to three weeks and appreciate the chance to be a part of this process. It's given us insight to what you face as council people, it's also been one of the starts to a relationship on other issues. So we do appreciate your work on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, David. In response to your question, it's really no mystery that when people call here to complain about what we do, we customarily just suggest that they call the Chamber of Commerce.
We appreciate that, just like when folks need to use the bathroom, we need another city map, we quite regularly are from here.
This is Jim Gurelli.
Mr. Owen, I appreciate you giving us the feelings of the board of directors of the chamber. I just wanted to sort of reiterate something that Mr. Bernofsky said earlier. I was thinking about the same kind of a comment and actually wrote it down so I could say it to you later, but I'll just say it to you now. Without getting back in too much to the MCAT issue, I do, I do think that what we're doing right now, this kind of public access is precisely what allows the public to get exposure to and to question the very kinds of expenditures that you're talking about now. And if you look at statistics of newspaper readership versus television, and certainly I know that there are questions about numbers as far as MCAT is concerned compared to commercial stations, but more people watch TV than read the newspaper, as unfortunate as that may be, it's true. And I would just encourage you to run that by the board of directors of the chamber if they haven't considered that, that these very questions that they have about city expenditures can be questioned by the entire public if we've got it on TV.
If it's fair to return a comment, I appreciate that, I will certainly tell them that the question came up. I guess the off-the-top-of-the-head response is, as the city looks at increasing its work in the public arena with some kind of public affairs officer or something which is suggested in this budget, one of my first comments would be, don't fall into the trap of thinking producing for MCAT is enough. If we're going to play numbers games, council member, then I think we need to fairly look at the numbers of people not watching MCAT. And I would seriously suggest to you that you're right, the TV viewership is up, that with the narrow casting, as we've heard, other categories are becoming, you know, it's going to be harder for us to get to those folks to take a look at that. But I would also suggest that traditional media has played a positive role in getting some of this word out. When we heard that some people just don't have access to it, I can't think of two more powerful groups when it comes to influencing the media of this town than the low-income group for humane treatment, Light and Montana People's Action. So I would suggest that some of those avenues are open to just about anybody and if we want to take a look at numbers, let's look at MCAT and I think we'll still come up with a legitimate question, but I'll certainly revisit the topic and Peshar come in.
Mr. Wood.
Would you recommend cutting the pedestrian bicycle coordinator position from the budget?
We have in the past recommended elimination of that position, but quite honestly, council member, I've not heard the chamber board or the group as concerned and I think if some of the funding is along this line, I'll have to ask them specifically what they want to do with that position. Again, given other kinds of trade-offs, the money we put in economic development, the money we want to invest in looking at housing and those types of things, I think you'd see a question about priority. Where's the funding going to come from? If you've got quote "easier" dollars from grants, that's easy. If it's harder dollars from tax money, it may not be as much a priority. They took a look at this and said, geez, are we going to be in this mode when this money's gone, trying to hold this position together? So in not answering your question right now, I'd say we've been critical of it in the past. It's going to take me a week or two to specifically react to the numbers that are there because they looked at it, noted it, but didn't conclude.
Thank you. Mr. Horton.
I have a question, Dave. Maybe it's just that you're a great speaker and wield a disproportionate amount of influence, but it appears that the chamber's positions seem to wield a disproportionate amount of influence in relation to other groups that present their positions. And I'm wondering, is there more of a relationship between the chamber and the city council than might appear on the surface?
Well, I guess I should start by saying thank you. We've never really come to that same conclusion. We have, in fact, been times sat in the basement of that building wondering what the heck happened and why we don't seem to be as influential as we'd like. I think if there is a feeling that there's familiarity, that there seems to be some level of influence, if there's one difference between the chamber and other organizations, it's the fact that the chamber has the financial resources to have a paid mouthpiece. I have the time to develop a relationship with people at this council, to share the information that I'm asked to share and to spend time doing it. As long as this board continues to make the relationship with City Hall, the government process that affects business a top priority, you'll see chamber execs, myself or others down here doing that. That may be one of the differences. But I would honestly tell you, after being at a number of zoning hearings, being in a number of places, I think the fact that you've got a paid mouthpiece here doesn't necessarily combat when this room is filled with other people and they are here and they are nervous, they get my admiration. I mean, people who stand here for the first time sweating bullets, stammering all over themselves, I probably respect more than the handful of the Nick Coughmans, the David Owens, the Abe Abrinsons who come down here all the time. And I think they play well in your arenas also. But we do have a larger, broader contact with the council that may spell some of the difference and we plan to continue that because we think it's a good way to be.
Mr. Reedy.
Yeah, David, I wonder if the chamber is active in trying to influence legislature into supporting local government issues such as, I'll give you, for instance, not taking any money away from the local movement in this present session of the legislature.
There's been a mixed review on some of that. There are some local government issues that we've been very supportive of, the ability to create the water district, some local option taxes we've been supportive of. There's been times when we've opposed some of the city positions. We love the thought of local option taxes, we get a little stingier when it comes to pointing at the room tax, probably somewhat predictable. We've taken a look at some of, I think one case runs to mind specifically, the ability to use citywide SIDs for something as narrow as open space in parks was a concern to the chamber board, but we've had a mixed reaction. But I would tell you that if you look at the chambers across the state, we probably have a closer relationship in supporting local government issues than either the state chamber, Billings Chamber, Great Falls or a handful of them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Owen? Thank you, David. I might say in following up on something that David mentioned about the effort to get the various taxing jurisdictions to compare notes and come up with some priorities for bonding issues, that the chamber has sponsored some of those discussions, I think they've been very fruitful. And as a follow-up on that, Chuck and I sat down with the District One School Board the other day and talked about possible conflict between our bonding issues this fall and theirs. And out of that came a request from them that we sit down between the city council and the school boards at large. And they've tentatively suggested that we do that on the evening of the 22nd of this month. So when we get to scheduling, we'll talk about that, but I thought that that's a good move in the right direction. So we'll get back to that issue later, but I'd like to thank the chamber for getting us started on those discussions. Is there any further testimony on the proposed budget?
I hadn't planned, Mr. Mayor, on addressing the council at this time, but I'm directly affected as having a business on the 93th Strip.
We do need your name and address.
Mark Healan, 233 Dixon. But I just would like to urge some reconsideration on the proposals of the usage of that thirty million that has been appropriated. I was quite disturbed, as Mr. Owens was, on the comments by the city-county health in making the statements that we have to hurry up and spend this money here locally because with the aeration on the gasoline that's going to occur, that that's going to take care and we will actually reduce the carbon monoxide level strictly from the new type of gas that they're going to introduce. And that the comment was made to the Missoulian that we had to hurry up and spend that money. And I think it's indicative of some of the types of things that was put forth in the proposed budget. You know, specifically, you know, in the comments that I've heard, the bicycle coordinator and some of the other things that in this Missoula area, and being a native of this city and for a period of time using a bicycle almost exclusively when I was attending the university, after about November, very few individuals are out there riding their bikes around in the weather that comes up quite unexpectedly. And so I question just how much money and also energy is put into those types of alternatives. I've ridden, I've ridden the bus for a long period of time, Mayor, I've seen you ride the bus. But the ridership on the bus is very low. I do not see a tremendous increase in ridership of either the bus or the bicycle system strictly by throwing some money at it. And I think that the council has a duty and a responsibility that if that thirty million dollars is not needed in this community, that it should be relinquished. We're talking about pork barrel politics and we're talking about some money that's coming to our community and now we're in a hurry to spend it, strictly for spending it because it's not our money. Well, the bottom line is, it is our money. It's coming out of our tax system. And if we are unable to spend that money or if the gasoline that's going to be introduced into this valley is a solution, I believe that we as responsible citizens of this country have a duty to relinquish some of that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony?
Again, my name's Neil Chase, I live on 328 Stevens Avenue. And I'm going to speak again on behalf of MCAT, but I'm not going to take up much time because I know there's other pressing issues forward. Given the tone in the last section, I wanted to state that I personally support the council's efforts and was not trying to imply the tone of the un-Americanism that you'd brought up earlier. But usually on Monday nights, I'm teaching a class at the university, which I've foregone this evening to come speak before the council tonight. And one of the things that makes the city of Missoula great is in the history of Montana, when the different cities were vying for what the economic base of the cities would be, Missoula got the university at Montana. And now, after over a hundred years of state's history, Missoula still stands out as one of the greater cities in the Montana State because of this. Now, what MCAT represents is sort of like the highways of the state, although it's not a physical infrastructure, it is the educational infrastructure that binds this community together. Now, as to the viewership of this, when the five or six different shows that we've had on there, we have ourselves advertised these shows throughout the city and paid for this advertising. The low viewership rates are not as low as you think and if this was the issue, then even more money than the 28% which has been proposed, if it were put into advertising would also eliminate this rate. But of course, getting TV commercial time for MCAT programming on regular TV networks such as the three stations in town would cost a lot more money than just twenty-eight thousand dollars. But this twenty-eight thousand, given the expansion of MCAT, including the expansion of the city limits of Missoula and the upkeep of equipment, when we're talking millions of dollars in other issues, is not that much. And it reminds me of a story which is real brief about a woman who had a horse and had a bag of grain and wanted to start saving some more of the grain and give less of it to the horse. So she figured she'd take a grain away each day and that way the horse wouldn't notice that it wasn't getting enough, less and less. So eventually what happened is she gets down to two grains and the horse died. And all the people looked at her and said, well, the horse is dead. She says, yes, and she says, you're a failure, you're a loser, the horse has died. She says, well, one more day and I would have had that horse down to a grain today and I would have been a success. So this is something to think about when we're talking about the MCAT programming in this town. Also, the different issues that are much deeper concern, such as the pollution rate, and I know that they're thinking of adding a different type of gasoline, that these are issues that if people were interested, could also put these issues directly on the MCAT network also, aside from people just hearing them brought up at these council meetings, but that they could have informational documentaries that would be able to, the people would be able to see that the job that is being done here isn't just something that is in the mind of the council members, but that is benefiting the people in the city of Missoula. And this in itself, being that MCAT represents an educational and knowledgeable infrastructure in that way, would help bind the community together bigger. And also, we look at the state of California and these other states which are in great trouble and are having problems with their budgets, a lot of people from these other states have been moving to Missoula and expect these type of benefits in their type of communities because of what they're used to living in other cities. Years ago, when I lived in Detroit, this was a city that had lost its economic base and didn't have a type of infrastructure as the MCAT provides for the community. And one of the things that ruins a city and a community is the people losing the value of things and the morals sinking low and not being able to see a way to, again, become educated and reverse their situations. And the MCAT in this way is very beneficial to that, to the council, to the city, and ultimately will also benefit the Chamber of Commerce. And that, for instance, people in the past who have been rich and keep the money for themselves so they can live in a certain way and don't reinvest that money, lose in the long run, as we see today, that the railway structure in this country and other things of this nature, the steel industry, the auto industry, the money was never reinvested in a way that it could have a longevity for things to last. It would be a shame to see certain interest groups, for whatever reasons, possibly cutting their noses off to spite their own faces without possibly realizing the seriousness of this. And the greatness of Missoula again is benefits sorts such as the University of Missoula of Montana and the MCAT programming. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any other testimony? If there's not, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Under my communications this evening, I had said that I wanted to say a few words about the MCAT situation. And there are just a couple of topics that I would like to address. This last Saturday, on the Fourth of July, National Public Radio had a half-hour special on all things considered, essentially about democracy in America, the focus of it was the congressional race. But interestingly enough, in the course of this half-hour special on democracy in America, what National Public Radio featured as essentially the one place that they were going to talk about where democracy was working well was Missoula City Hall. And I was very proud of the city of Missoula for that fact and I was especially proud for the fact that Juanita Isman was included on the program, talking to some of our constituents and that that was used as an example of democracy working well. But I think that democracy does work well in Missoula mostly because we have an incredibly active citizenry in Missoula. That active citizenry is responsible for our having community access at all. It has worked with the city government relentlessly over the years in seeing to it that we would have an outstanding community access capability. And because of the activism of the citizenry in Missoula, I do believe, in fact, that we have an outstanding use of community access here. I believe that, while I was joking to a certain extent about, talking about our City Hall as the best place for democracy in the country, I don't think that in some ways that it's that far off. And part of the reason for it is that we continue to experiment with truly democratic tools that allow for the expansion of democratic involvement. I think that MCAT is something that the city of Missoula should be proud of, and by the city, I mean the city government, but above all the citizens who have been involved in it. And so, while I know that there will be a continuing debate about whether or not we should put as high a percentage of the franchise fee into this activity as we do, and I believe that it's probably true that we already put a higher percentage than most cities in the country do. Still, I believe that it's a sound investment in democracy in Missoula and one that I will continue to support and I hope that we'll be able to continue the partnership that we have had. I want to turn now to another example of the media where, well, most of the time I think- think it serves the community well, I believe it has now failed to do so. In general, the Missoulian, before it does editorials on matters of public policy, has a policy of having the editorial writer call the parties concerned and make sure that they understand what's going on before they engage in editorialism. The value of doing that is reinforced when they fail to do it, and we see the results of their failing to do it. The editorial today was as misinformed and as inflammatory and as misleading as anything I can conceive of a newspaper coming up with. And it was that because the Missoulian, for reasons known only to themselves, decided to depart from their usual policy of checking the facts before they write an editorial. The editorial that I'm referring to is the editorial about the city's position on an interpretation of Initiative 105. The Missoulian would have its readers believe that the position of the city of Missoula is that when we pass a bond issue and then the bond issue is paid off, that we, in effect, continue to tax people as if the bond issue had never been paid off. The example that they give is a fire station. And so clearly what they're suggesting is that if we passed a fire station bond and then paid it off, that we would continue to tax as if it had never been paid off. Nothing could be further from the truth than the simplest phone call to the city would have discovered that that is not the case. What this issue is about is an interpretation of I-105. What I-105 said is that the tax rate, in effect, at the time that I-105 was adopted, would remain as a ceiling on the tax rate for any taxing jurisdiction. Those words are fairly simple and straightforward, that the interpretation that we have taken with it is that, well, there were bond issue levies in effect at that time, that those were included, along with all other types of mill levies, and that our taxes were frozen at that level. Now, what the Missoulian goes on to do is to say that at the very first suggestion that what it was doing might be improper, city officials had an obligation to clarify their taxing authority. Well, long before there was any suggestion that our interpretation might have been improper, just in order to make sure that our interpretation was correct, in 1987, at the time that the legislature enacted legislation to follow up on I-105, Chuck Sterns, who was then a fiscal, not the fiscal officer, but a fiscal analyst for the city, raised this issue and said, we'd better make sure of exactly what's the correct interpretation. He wrote a letter to the Department of Commerce, which was the overseeing agency for the question. We got back an answer that made it clear that the city's position was the correct position. We have since then relied upon that. We have done everything that was necessary in order to determine whether or not our position was sound. That includes having been audited year after year with audits that include compliance with state law. And every one of those audits has found the city to be in compliance with state law. The county has raised the question of whether or not this is a proper interpretation. It seems to us that it's perfectly legitimate to raise the question. We have suggested that if it's going to be raised, since it does impact several other taxing jurisdictions in Montana, including Yellowstone County and the city of Bozeman, that we should at least confer with them and with the League of Cities and with the Montana Association of Counties before seeking an attorney general's opinion. We have continued to make it clear that we're perfectly willing to jointly seek an attorney general's opinion with the county or with those other entities. But the implication by the Missoulian that the city has not asked the question is simply irresponsible on the part of the newspaper. And if they had been the least bit interested in informing the public instead of creating a sensation, then they would have followed their usual practice of making a simple phone call. They have instead taken a course which will be very difficult to correct. It will be very difficult to allow the public to become well-informed on this issue now. And I have to say that I'm deeply disappointed in the Missoulian's treatment of this issue. I am not someone who generally likes to argue with the press. I don't find it to be productive. And I have developed, I think, a very thick skin. I let things roll off of me that people in this room very often feel I should not allow to roll off of me. But I don't believe that there's usually a lot of advantage in arguing with the press. But the freedom of the press, which kind of gets us back to our earlier topic, is something that is valued precisely because of the contribution that it makes to the democratic process. And in order for it to make that contribution, there has to be an equal level of responsibility that goes with it. In general, the Missoulian exercises that level of responsibility. In this case, they have very substantially fallen below that standard. We'll go on now to the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the items.
There are seven items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve the removal of the tree at 808 Defoe for street maintenance reasons after contacting the private owner and replacing it with two new trees at the expense of the Parks Department. Second is to approve easement for Montana Power on city-owned land in the Rattlesnake. Third, to award construction contract for SID 501 Northwest Broadway Sanitary Sewer System to Van Dyke Irrigation Service Incorporated for $637,646.50 for bid alternative A contingent upon state approval. Fourth, return bid bonds to all unsuccessful bidders for SID 501 Northwest Broadway Sanitary Sewer System. Fifth, award contract for project number 92-035, 1,000 block of Edith Street, to Keene Construction Company for $7,729.2 and return bid bonds to all unsuccessful bidders. Sixth, award contract for sidewalk and curb project number 92-037, Crosby, from Longstaff to Stevens, to Keene Construction Company for $14,830.92 and return bid bonds to all unsuccessful bidders. And seventh, award contract for sidewalk and curb project number 92-039, Mansfield, from Beckwith to Woodworth, to Keene Construction Company for $12,211.29 and return bid bonds to all unsuccessful bidders.
Are there any items that any council members would like to have returned to the regular agenda? Mrs. Craig.
I'd like number two returned to the Conservation Committee.
Returned to the Conservation Committee?
Committee report, uh-huh.
To the committee report?
Report.
Okay. Any other items to be returned to the regular agenda? If not, we will vote on item one and three through seven. Chuck?
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Horton. Absent. Loughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rosenle.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Jingerelli.
Yes.
Curtis, we're on the consent agenda. Do you want to vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda passes 11-0.
We'll go on now to committee reports. First is the Administration Ordinances and Resolutions Committee. Mr. Reedy.
Yes, the committee recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to contract with and spend $1,250 from the mayor's internship portion of the mayor's budget to employ a student intern, Heather Moss, and I so move. And Dennis isn't here, and maybe the mayor can keep it down to three minutes and explain us.
Oh, I can do that. We have actually had the services of Heather as an intern over the last quarter for free, and she has done remarkably good work for us. She has worked very hard on Vision 2020 and also on the mayor's youth council. She'll continue to do that kind of work. She's an extremely productive intern.